Lovely, right. As far as I can see, we are live.
Okay, thank you, Olivia. Well, good evening councillors and good evening to any members of the public who are listening in this evening. We'll start our December Faysley Town Council meeting. So, thank you for attending. First of all, Bob, any apologies for absence recorded?
We've got apologies from Joe Atkins and Jean Dan and possibly Alex Farrell if he can't make it to our meeting.
Okay. Declarations of interest, and I have to make a declaration in this particular time. I understand. For attending. First of all, Bob, any apologies perhaps? We seem to get an echo.
Oh, you're back now, Brian.
Okay, I got picked up an echo then of me repeating what I was saying.
Apologies, I didn't realise my microphone was still on. It was just me checking it was live streaming.
Right, okay, okay. We got a repeat of me and that's the last thing we need. Right, so that's apologies. Thank you, thank you, thank you for that. Bob, in terms of declarations of interest, I have to declare an interest because I understand there's a possibility that one of the planning applications that will come up later is Bonehill House. And I have to declare an interest as a neighbour of that particular property. And as an individual, I've submitted an objection to the property at Bonehill House. So I'm declaring an interest in that planning application.
And Bob, can I as well also declare an interest more or less, well, exactly the same as councillor Holter said? Please, it affects us the planning.
So that's two declarations of interest. Any other declarations of interest councillors?
Not as far as I'm concerned, no.
Okay, okay. Well, thank you for that. The minutes of the meeting, do any councillors have any comments with regard to the non-confidential section of the November council meeting minutes? Or can we declare those as a true record of the meeting? Any comments or issues councillors at all with the November minutes on the non-confidential section? Okay, in that case, could I have a proposal and a second to pass them as a true record, please? Thank you, Sue. Thank you. Well, thank you, Sue and Dawn.
Dawn, I put down, Dawn proposed, seconded by Sue.
Yeah, thank you. So that's Dawn and Sue for the minutes. Thank you for that. So they're passed as a true record. So that's item one of the agenda. Item two, police matters, Bob. Any, any police matters to discuss this month?
There isn't, no, nothing's come through from Maggie. But what I have come to the conclusion about is that quite a few parish town councils in Staffordshire get monthly statistics from the police as regards to what's happened in the area. So I thought I'm going to have a go with everyone's agreement to try and get these, the routine established for monthly crime statistics for our parish. I've got a feeling, I may have mentioned this before, that some parish town councils get these statistics. But we certainly have never had them. And with everyone's approval, I'll try and get them. So we can see what's happening in the, in Faysley, Mile Oak and Bonehill.
Sounds an excellent idea, yes. I presume everyone's in approval of that. We'd like to receive those. Is that something you'll get through our PCSO Maggie, Bob, then?
I'm not sure. No, I don't think, I think I'll have to go to, I'll have to go to a higher level than Maggie. Probably to the local sergeant or even Ia, but we'll try and get that. Why it started, why it started turning in my mind, in the sense that just off the road I live in, Dostal Road, I noticed a lot of houses started to have gates put up. And that's in the last month. And I found out today, the reason was there's so many cars being stolen off the drives. So I started thinking about, you know, what am I going to do personally? And then my mind turned to statistics. So I'll see if I can, I see, I can't guarantee anything, but let's see what happens.
Okay, well, thank you for that, Bob. So you're going to pursue that in terms of statistics for the, any data on the front concerning the parish? Okay, so that's police matters. So item three then, Bob, please, progress report and action.
Progress report. On this one, we've got three items on there. The neighbourhood plan. We're all, with Kirk Miles, we've got it all set up. And I think we've just got to move towards in 2021 to organising perhaps mini Zoom meetings and kickstart this neighbourhood plan group again. I mean, it's drifted into, shall I say, into oblivion really. So I think it's, I think it's something that we'll have to try and kickstart in the new year. Because we're set up to go and see how we do on that one. The additional notice board, I know this one's gone on, but I did, I haven't heard anything from Onkar on this one. And I rang to check it out and found that he's actually broken his collarbone. And when I rang this morning to find out what his thoughts were, he was in hospital at the time. But I have no idea when he'd done it. But she did say he's put everything behind. And she said, what his mother said to me was, your best plan is ring after Christmas. Because we are so busy with the Christmas period and he's got this broken collarbone. So that one, that one has been gone going as well. And that's really all on the progress.
Can I just go back to the neighbourhood plan, Bob? The lady, our consultant, whose name escapes me at the moment, wasn't she actively pursuing some of the grant application process or in background, or am I mistaken?
Yeah, in background, she was assisting with that. And I have put the forms in. I've not had a confirmation that we've got the grant, but I've got, I've got no reason to think that we won't. I did speak to another parish clerk that I know and he told me it took a month, month or more to get confirmation through. They use an organisation called Groundwork. So the locality don't actually do it themselves. They sub it out to another organisation. But I haven't received anything back as yet.
Okay, okay, thank you. So are we clear then on progress report and action then for the moment, Bob?
For the time being, yeah. I've got a few updates under the clerk's report. Because they, the sort of progress and actions overlap with.
Yes, of course, of course. Okay, well, that's item three. We'll do it per the agenda anyway. So item four, town mayor's announcement. The only thing I would say, I was recommended by our leader councillor Alex Farrell, who you say can't be present today, to put a small Christmas message to our parish in the Herald. So I've actually written a brief Christmas message and I understand it may be to, it may be published this week. And that's a message to parishioners and residents of Faysley, Mile Oak and Bonehill. We'll see what comes out in the Herald. So that's the only announcements I have to make today. Which moves us then on to item five, agenda item five, questions to the mayor, deputy mayor or town clerk, understanding order 11. Has anything been received at all, Bob?
No, nothing on that at all, Miss Mayor.
Okay, so we're moving at a pace today, but I guess there'll be more to talk about. Item six then, please, Bob, the clerk's report.
Yeah, on the clerk's report, it's an update on some of the items we discussed previously. Take the War Memorial. I did, I did ask two memorial masons to have a look at the War Memorial as, as recommended by the National Association, who backtrack to the War Memorials Trust. And they, when they saw what was needed, they said it was just a bit too big for them. They, because of the, there will be the need for some heavy lifting gear to move, move the items, move parts of the War Memorial. That, one of them put me onto another guy, chap called Phil Hamlet, who has worked on St Tedders and also Litchfield Cathedral. And he goes back to a company in Litchfield with a long, well, they're not, it's not trading now, it's got, went into liquidation. But he did start with Lingford's stroke Bridgeman's in Litchfield, who used to do quite a lot of work on the cathedral. But I'd not heard anything. So this morning I phoned Phil and what he said to me that, and this happens quite a bit at the moment, he's been snowed under with work to do. But he's guaranteed he'll get the quote to me this week. And then, of course, what I'll do is I'll forward it on to the War Memorial Trust to see what they make of it. Bear in mind, when it comes to War Memorials, I can look at them, but technically I've got no knowledge about, you know, what's good and what's bad. So I was looking for a bit of feedback from the War Memorial Trust to say, well, yes, this is a good one. And I'm not saying the quote's good, I'm saying the technical recommendations is a good one to use. So that's the first one. On the bollards outside the jet garage, I've emailed Tim Hemmingsley to ask what's going to happen on there, because nothing's, nothing's happened to date. But I haven't received a reply. Sometimes we're lucky with Tim, we get a quick reply, sometimes we don't. And the other item which I'll bring up under Alan White's section under the county councillors' report, he has come back regarding the problem of vehicles parking outside the boathouse. The mill house opposite the town hall, that one, I do know from personal experience that when builders give you a date, totally disregard that gate date because you'll never get that one, whichever they say. But I spoke to one of the directors today of the company that's taken over the mill house and the Tolsons Mill, Simon Dawson. I did check him out on Companies House and he is listed there as a director along with a couple of other guys.
What's the company name, Bob?
Pardon?
What's the company name?
I haven't got it in front of me, actually. I can let you know that tomorrow, Brian. I've got it in my diary.
Okay.
Got it.
Yeah, don't worry. Sorry, I interrupted you mid-flow.
Yes, no problem. I thought I'd got it in here, actually. I might be wrong. Oh, Shave Real Estate.
Sorry?
Shave Real Estate.
Shades?
Shave.
Shave?
Yeah.
Right. But sorry, what did he, what did he tell you, Bob? Sorry about that.
Simon, yeah, he seems quite a reasonable and open chap, if that's possible. But he said that he was disappointed he hasn't been able to stick to what he said in the first place, which was to demolish the mill house by the 31st of December. He told me he's got the quotes and he wants to start on the site. He doesn't want to do it piecemeal on the site. He has also satisfied all the, he has recently satisfied all the conditions laid down by Litchfield District Council planning. And he says the first thing that we will see straight into the new year is that they will start putting scaffolding up around the new mill, around the old mill. Because one thing, the priority, which he told me he wasn't aware of at the time when we last spoke, is that to make it water secure, that there's no water coming in from the mill roof. So they're going to seal that off. But he did say to me that in January or February, he'd be very willing to have a site meeting with us to talk to us face to face of what he's planning, what they're planning, how long it'll take and the disruption involved. So he was quite open to that. And he has agreed to having a site meeting, as I say, January or February 21.
Okay, well, that's encouraging. I mean, I don't know what councillors think, but I've been so disillusioned by inaction on the mill house for so long. You know, until something happens, you don't really believe it. But it sounds genuine that he's going to, they are going to start that development. And although we've been calling for the mill house to be made to look better, if it comes down and it's replaced by what we've seen on the plans, all to the better. And I'd certainly, I don't know what other councillors would think, but I'd certainly welcome a brief face to face meeting, suitably socially distanced in the new year, to get a clearer picture of what they're planning to do. But any developments of that site along the lines of the plans we've seen should be a huge improvement for the middle of Faysley.
Yeah, we can't get any worse, put it like that.
No, well, that's encouraging, that's encouraging. So thanks, thanks for that update on the, well, that whole development, Bob.
Okay. Finally, I'll just mention about the town hall floor. I did, I have got in touch with Jim, Jim Huff, and emailed him, put in writing to him what we'd like him to help or assist us find a builder suitably qualified with also suitable people on the surveying and building construction side to monitor the floor being done. And he, but he hasn't sent me the details as yet. But I, he has assured me that he will look into this. When I, when I spoke to him, he was in Wigan or something like that, working up in, up north there. So I think he gets around quite a bit.
Yeah, yeah. I mean, at the end of the day, I guess we need, we need three quotes, don't we, for that?
Yes.
To satisfy, what's the name of the chap who's doing the grant assistance?
Oh, Mike Deegan.
Mike Deegan, yes, to satisfy Mike Deegan, who's, who's working with us on the applications. The other point on the town hall floor, Bob, when do we need those letters of commendation from users? Is that something you've got in hand at all?
Yeah, I did, I'm, I'm sure, I'm getting a bit confused on that one. But I'm sure I've spoken to Mike and said to him about, you know, the quotes and the user comments for the hall. And that's going about a couple of weeks ago, actually. But definitely we'll have some, you know, written support from the hall users, yes.
Yes, yeah. I mean, we don't need them immediately because it's going to take a while to get the, to find and cut the contractors and get suitable quotes. But as long as we've got all that together, you know, ultimately, and I guess it's going to take a few months to get off to Mike Deegan, who can then assist us with, assist us further with the grant applications.
Yep.
Okay, all right, thanks. Okay, so that's the town hall floor, Bob, thank you.
And that's it, actually. Okay.
Right, I was going to bring up further comments on the town hall Zoom meetings, which you reported last time. But I really need Alex there. Alex was going to do a technical appraisal such that we could put a notice on notice boards as to how to connect into these Zoom meetings. And he was going to add a link onto Facebook as well. But I think if we make a note to the effect, Bob, that any further discussion on that previous minute, 233G, will have to, have to be deferred until January.
Yep.
So let me just make a note of that. So that's a tech appraisal, because we need, we need Alex for that. So we'll defer till January. Okay, thank you for that. So that clears the clerk's report, which brings us to item seven, please, Bob, then. Any county and district council reports at all?
There's no district, nothing from the district, no district councillors' reports. However, county, we have the email that we received from Alan White. And what Alan has confirmed, it's regarding the problem that we've had with vehicles parking on the, on the road outside the boathouse, which is just below where the canal, the road rises with the canal bridge. And what he's, what he's done, he's agreed to finance or fund the completion of the yellow lines on the road to stop the parking there. Because what, remember councillors, one of the worst things is, and I've witnessed this myself, is that with the cars there parked on the side of the road outside the boathouse, cars have to stop or slow up to go around the car. And then we have vehicles coming up from the Faysley roundabouts, coming over the top of the canal bridge at speed. And it's a disaster just, just waiting to happen really. I mean, I've seen them come over the bridge and literally, virtually, and I think you have, Mr Mayor, as well, and virtually take off. So Alan's confirmed that in email, that he's sanctioned that to be done.
I mean, that's excellent news. Sorry, carry on.
Sorry, can I just ask, it's not just, what can we do about the people that actually park on the pavement? Because that again is a very dangerous practice, because they actually park fully on the pavement, on the bridge. So if you're in a, you know, if you've got a pushchair or a motability scooter, you've got to go out into the road.
Well, that one, Dawn, if they, if they park, we actually had Tim Hemmingsley down there to look at that. And there were, there was, sorry, a vehicle parked there. And he said, I'm sure, and I think, Brian, you can confirm this, he said that they can put the vehicle there if it's not on the yellow line or it's not stopping wheelchair or pushchair access on the pavement. And he said it was in, it wasn't enforceable. Now, I might, I might have it slightly wrong, but do you recall that, Mr Mayor, on that one?
I think so, yes. I think it's a funny issue, pavement parking, isn't it? Outside of London, pavement parking is tolerated, as you say. My understanding is providing the sufficient room for a wheelchair or a pushchair to get past. And Dawn, where you're talking about, the pavement is extremely wide in that area.
It is wide.
And I think they look against the wall, don't they?
Yeah, but the problem is, so what if it's a car, but sometimes there's quite large vans there? And I don't see how someone who was a wheelchair user or a pushchair could get past. It depends where abouts they actually park, because obviously there's different widths of the footpath there. I know it's wide, but I still think it's dangerous.
I think, I think you're right, actually, Dawn. I do recall now that I did meet on site, not only Tim Hemmingsley, but also the manager of the traffic management section. And they said actually the same. But when we were there, it was a relatively small car. And I think you've, you've pointed out the weakness there, Dawn. So what I would suggest is, I'll, I'll take this up again, Mr Mayor, if you agree, with Tim and the traffic management about when, say, say they put their, you know, a van or a larger vehicle. I mean, let's see what they say. Would you be happy with that, Dawn?
Yeah, yeah, definitely, definitely. As long as it's, it's safe for the pedestrians, then, you know, I'm happy, you know. It's just, it happened, it first happened a couple of years ago and I did actually call the police at the time. And it must have been that too, too long ago, because I was certainly on the council then. And, you know, the response I got was a bit lukewarm, to say the least. And they wouldn't go and look at it unless they had lots of people phone up about it. All right then, but I'm phoning you and I'm telling you it's.
So let's have a go. I'll take it up with both Tim and traffic management.
I think also, Bob, I think the, the traffic management people had actually reiterated, I think, what Dawn had said, that you, in terms of parking on the pavement, it's an enforcement issue. And if the law is being broken, and clearly Dawn is correct, if there is a wide van or lorry on there, that is not compliant with the laws. But unfortunately, it's an enforcement issue. And it requires, you know, there to be a policeman or a traffic warden in the vicinity to enforce it. The problem is the availability of people to enforce it. I think that's the problem. But no, Bob, by all means, take it up with traffic management and Tim Hemmingsley again, just to, just, just to re, get them to restate their position. But I have a feeling that that is something that would have to be an enforcement issue and that, that's the problem. Just going back to the main point, I mean, obviously Alan White, who's now the leader of Staffordshire County Council, is our county councillor. And I'm pleased to say, because he does have a limited budget for the, if the area recovers. And I do know these traffic regulation orders, they call them, Bob. They are also limited as to the number of TROs that can be applied per year in a particular area. So I'm pleased that he's actually sanctioned this traffic regulation order and willing to fund it, putting double yellow lines not on one side of the road, but on both sides of the road. So I think, you know, that's pleasing to know that, that we're getting some funding and support from county. The only problem is, and I have no idea why, it can take up a year, it can take up to a year, I think, to implement them. But that's administration for you.
I think it's, what the delay, well, first of all, the cost. I think the average cost is £4,000. And the, the delay in getting it done is going through the legal process. And they do have to do a limited consultation as well. So I think that's what delays it all.
I'm sure you're right, I'm sure you're right. But at least it's a positive that we're going to get some, some yellow lines there, which in insufficient time, hopefully, will remove that problem. But by all means, as Dawn said, please pursue the issue of the pavement parking, just to see if we can get a better position on that. Right, Bob, thank you. Is there anything further to report then with regard to district and county councillors' reports?
No, there isn't, Mr Mayor.
Okay, so thank you for that. So that comes under county then, Alan White's funding of the yellow lines by the boathouse. So that takes us then from item seven on to item eight, planning, please, Bob.
Yes, and the planning applications, the first one I'll come to is the one that you actually and Margaret have declared an interest in, in the sense that Mr Andy Glover at Bonehill House, Park Lane, Bonehill, has put an application in for the creation of a total of eight numbered dwellings by erection of an extension to and conversion hub, the garage stroke office, to create five new dwellings, conversion of a gym stroke swimming pool to create one new dwelling, and the erection of two detached dwellings at that location at Bonehill House in Park Lane, Bonehill.
Okay, well, thank you. I mean, Margaret and I can't comment on that for obvious reasons. We have an interest and we can't comment on that.
I think, I mean, just to give a lead for councillors, I mean, the, the obvious thing is that regarding this Bonehill House, there is a bit of history and involved with it. So that is one aspect. Also, to create eight, shall we say, living, living homes is going to generate quite a volume or increase in the volume of traffic. When I've dropped things, items off to the town mayor, it's a relatively narrow road through Bonehill, round to the back. And I think there's an issue, an highway issue, about the volume of traffic and the width of the road. So coming out of the site, I mean, so that's a lead for a start off that I think councillors should take into consideration.
I, when you said eight dwellings, I had to write it again. I can't believe that they'd be trying to get that many, cram that many in there. That just seems excessive to me.
It is. I mean, it does seem to be excessive. It's quite intense, isn't it? High density. So it's certainly going to change the character of the building. And whether there is a heritage aspect to it, that's, that's certainly going to change. The highway one is, you know, a definite matter to flag up with Litchfield District Council. I think also that, that, you know, that there should be restrictions as to them, restrict, I would say, there should be restrictions as to the type of material that is used in the construction, the type of windows that should be used in the construction, because, you know, it's got to blend in with the character of the original building.
Definitely, because most of the new, you know, what they've done round there is very, very sympathetic. I still can't believe that that's actually going to be that many.
Well, I assume they're going to move on actually, but they, they certainly put in a lot in there.
Yeah, well, they won't be living there, will they?
No, they won't, don't. But has any other comments from, from councillors? I mean, I put here the heritage of the, the original building and the sympathetic use of appropriate building materials must be controlled and restricted, and also the volume on the highway.
Yeah.
Because it's, it's quite a change.
I think so.
Is anything else anyone wants to add? Does everyone agree?
Yeah, definitely, definitely. Definitely.
You send this in?
Yeah.
Okay, and I've recorded that Brian and Margaret did not take, uh, have any involvement. Ironically enough, that one is, we then get a follow up. Uh, the original, uh, one I've just spoken about is by a Mr Andy Glover, Bone Hill House. And then we have a follow up from Mr John Glover, uh, Laxford Lodge, Park Lane. And these applied replacement of all existing windows, demolition of front porch. Side garage, demolition of the front porch, the side garage and rear single story element. Erection of a new single story rear extension, two story side extension. And detached triple garage with accommodation above. Now, he has in fact, uh, John Glover's put in two applications. The first one is, well, the first one actually in number order is a full householders. Application and the second one is a list, listed building consent application. Ooh.
Yes, I, I, I'll comment on that, um, because, um. In this instance, Laxford Lodge actually is, is like a separate wing that was originally part of Bone Hill Ha, well, it's still part of Bone Hill House. But it's, it's attached to it, but it's a separate dwelling, uh, so, uh, Margaret and I aren't, you know, aren't, aren't, uh.
Directly.
Aren't directly neighbours of that property, so we've not been notified. Uh, so there's no direct, uh, neighbour interest we've got in this in terms of LDC notifying us. Uh, again, it's, it's adjacent to Bone Hill House, I, I'm not aware of this planning application. And clearly there's some, um. Improvements they wish to do to that and some extensions to it. I've not yet seen the applications, but I'll have a look at them. Uh, so I can't comment other than that, uh, you know, yes, again, it's, um. It's an extension, uh, of, um. What, what is part of a listed building, I don't know if, I, I guess Laxford Lodge has its own listing, uh, I'm unsure on that. Um, but clearly there's work they wish to do on that in terms of extending that. When is the due date on that one, Bob, for?
Uh, that one is, um. Just looking at it, actually, yeah, just twen, well, it's 23 days, um. Actually, uh, this one is dated the 2nd of December, so it would be on the 20th, on Christmas Day, actually. So, uh, uh, you know, I, I would say we've got to get in our response, if any response, you know, before Christmas.
Well, I'll certainly look at that with interest, I wasn't aware of that one and, um. It, it is, I say, it's actually adjoining to the, uh, to the rear of Bone Hill House, Laxford Lodge. Okay, thank you, Bob. Any other planning applications come through?
Yep, we have, we've got Mr and Mrs Hart, uh, 11 Sutton Road, Mile Oak. They want, their proposal is a two story extension to side and rear, including Juliet balcony. Single story extension to rear and installation of new front porch. Okay. And then we're down that way again, uh, 30, uh, Mr and Mrs Blight. At 36 Gamesborough Drive, Mile Oak, first floor extension to side above garage. And the last one is, um. An application by Mr Chris Woodcock for Jackie's Cake Kitchen, which is, um. On Averson Street, um, uh, uh, there, 30 Averson Street. And it says erection of timber cabin to provide additional client meeting room space. Now, that one, um, it, I, it's got to be at the back of the building because the front is the, um, is the A5 sort of thing. Okay. I assume that's sort of a shed type of construction.
Right, yeah.
Okay, that's it.
Okay, so those are all available, should we wish to see them on the Lichfield District website on the new applications?
They are, yes, yeah.
Okay. Thank you for that, for that then, Bob, so that's planning, um, item nine, please, then, correspondence.
Lichfield District Council, first of all, um, you, I, I, I think, um. I don't know whether I mentioned this at a meeting, but, uh, what we've had is an invoice, um. From Lichfield District Council for the parish council elections in May 2019. Now, the invoice, the invoice i- is quite a large amount. In fact, it's £6,500 and I, I have, um, I have sent an email to Sarah Pearce. Who is the elections officer, asking a, one, could we have a detailed breakdown as to what, what that, uh, what makes that up? And also, uh, a comparison with previous elections. Um. When I received the invoice, it says a breakdown of the costs will follow, but I haven't received, I have asked for them again. After this email and, uh, but I haven't had them as yet, but, um, I'm, I'm, I'm sure Sarah is very busy at the moment, so. I'm sure we will get that, uh, at some stage.
But presumably we don't, we don't intend to pay this bill until we see that breakdown.
Correct, yes, yeah.
Councillors presumably will agree with that.
Yes.
Yes, definitely.
Yeah, yes, I mean, I'm sure we're going to have to pay, but, uh, we would like to see that, uh, breakdown of costs. And that's, that's a good point, actually, Bob, the comparison with previous years as well.
That sounds quite excessive, doesn't it?
It seems odd to me, actually, Dawn, yeah.
I can't remember what we've paid previously, to be honest, Dawn, but certainly we'd like to see that comparison and breakdown, it's a big number.
Yeah, it is. The other thing is since the last meeting, I, I received an annual, uh, return from Lichfield District Council. For the community infrastructure levy. Now, under this scheme, the, the levy, we have in the past received amounts, but in the last 12 months. We haven't received anything, so it was a, it was relatively straightforward, it was a lot of, a lot of zeros. But I've, I've sent that back anyway, that's been done. Um, we did, um. Um, I think I'll leave that one until a little bit later. We did have a, a circular come through from, uh, Lichfield District Council. About the fact that, um, they are assisting with the creation of the Lichfield Community Lottery Good Cause Launch. That was, uh, uh, recently. Uh, in the sense that, oh, now I've got my date wrong, it's going to be launched on the 18th of January 21. Um, and also they are circulating to, uh, uh, to residents, details of the Christmas bin collections and recycling reminders. Uh, that's the SIL report that I mentioned. Yeah. Lichfield again, we received a request from Lichfield District Council to book Faysley Town Hall for the 6th of May. Uh, that's, uh, an all day, uh, booking and it says. Uh, the major elections taking place next May are. The rescheduled Police and Fire and Crime Commissioners election and the county council elections. So they have asked to book, uh, the, um, the town hall for that.
Okay.
That's the Christmas, uh, now moving from Lichfield to Staffordshire. There isn't much come through from Staffordshire, what we've had is the Staffordshire Archives, Archives Newsletter. And the general newsletter, a lot of stuff about Covid in there, by the way. Uh, and that's that. In general correspondence, we've had a letter from our insurers, WPS Insurance, Town Council Insurance. Uh, warning us regarding, uh, cyber attack and, um, the, uh, the difficulties of dealing with that. Uh, Staffordshire Parish Council's bulletin, which is very informative, that's come through. Um, and we have, uh, here, the, oh, right. Staffordshire Parish Council's, um, uh. Association have circulated a letter to all members. Of the association regarding an incident that's happened, um. With a county councillor and what it is, it's, it's warning. Parish town councils that this particular can, uh, county councillor. Um. Someone with the, uh, through, uh, their internet skills. Have started to, or e, email skills, should I say, have started to send out emails, uh. Making out that they are the county councillor and either raising, uh, false accusations or false. Comments made by an individual county councillor. And what the, what the county councillor of us, the Parish Council's Association is to warn, uh, uh. Members like ourselves and councillors and clerks that, uh. Someone is doing this and, um, making some of the statements. Quite, which are quite outrageous, uh, to be quite plausible. So what they've done is they've sent a letter out, a warning to be on, on, on your guard, uh, uh, regarding such emails. Okay. Um, and I, I, I've heard, before they circulated this, I did hear of one where, uh, an email was being, uh. Where an email was being circulated, um, and it. It's very clever how they do it in, in the sense, the information that's on the email. But in the one I heard about was that they were saying that the chairman of that particular council had made some pretty outrageous statements, which. Uh, if they were true, would offend quite a lot of people. And of course he had to very quickly, uh, circulate to all his contacts. That these statements were totally untrue and were extremely, uh. Well, I don't know, I'll say mischievous, I'm not sure if there's other words that could be, uh, used. Um, the other thing I just, I've just mentioned that, um. The town mayor did circulate to all councillors, uh, requesting thoughts on the funding for Millfield School Crossing Patrol Wardens. And, uh, since our last meeting, because, uh, the replies were in agreement. Uh, we have, uh, carried out that payment to Millfield School.
That's it, that answers was just really confirmation, it had previously been agreed at our budget meeting in February. But because that was some time ago, I just wanted confirmation that we're all of the same, uh. Um, the same thoughts that we should carry on and, and make that payment, which we did.
Yep. Um, town mayor's powers to act. Uh, did, uh, excuse me, councillors, uh, did speak to the, the town mayor. We've, uh, done our annual pack testing at the town hall and the youth annex at Mile Oak. And, uh, we've also booked the gas boiler service and safety certificate for the town hall. Um. The pack testing has been done, but we booked for the 6th of January for the gas boiler. To be serviced and a safety certificate to be issued.
Okay, thank you for that. Is, uh, any more on the town mayor's powers, powers to act, Bob, is that it?
That was it, Mr Mayor, that was it.
Thank you. Um, okay, moving on then, item 11, authorisation of non-confidential payments, please.
Uh, there is one payment and that's to HM Revenue and Customs, £579.16.
£579.16.
I think it was 60.
60. Sorry, that 579.60?
16, 16.
Thank you for that. Okay, well, um, we've covered the ground quite quickly, which is not unusual for the December meeting. The December meeting tends to be a little on the short side, um, so we've covered the non-confidential section of the meeting. Um, Olivia, are you still in communication with us, please? Because at this point, I. Oh, okay, thank you. I have to thank members of the public who may have, um. Signed in to listen to the first part of the meeting, thank you very much indeed. And happy Christmas to you all, but we are now asking all members of the public and any members of the press, please to leave the meeting. Uh, as we're now entering the confidential section of the meeting, so, uh, if you could.